Please join to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Nice to have some other people here tonight. We've been kind of lonely the last couple meetings.
Yeah, we've got a crowd here.
That's right. If anybody would like an agenda, they're here and you're welcome to them. And the next order of business for us is to review our agenda and to make any amendments as needed. Does anybody have any amendments to the agenda? I would entertain a motion then to accept it as written.
Make a motion.
So, go. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next, we're going to review the minutes of our previous meeting, which was November 21st. Do everybody have a chance to look through those? And, okay. If anybody would like to make a motion?
Some move to accept the minutes?
Second.
Any for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is our Rutland County Planning Commission report. That would be me. That would be you.
I don't have much to report.
Oh, for the record, would you just state your name so that we have it? Yes, I'm trying to be more official about that.
Okay. Sheldon Taylor, Rutland Regional Planning Commissioner and Chair of the Dambie Plan Commission. I don't have much to report. I was not at the meeting for the 21st. I'm Melissa. I was at the hospital with my father. Michelle has surgery. I understand that there was concern voiced that we did not have a presence at that meeting. I will say we attended every meeting except for that one.
Oh, okay. We haven't heard from you in a while here, though. So can you sort of update us in general since you're here?
Mostly what they did, the YAC-250 thing, has been mostly focused on cell phone towers and solar arraignments here and there, with something interesting that in West Polat area, they're putting solar arraignments on the top of those slag heaps of slate.
Oh, interesting.
They're leveling them right off, and there's three or four over there. You can't see them from the road.
Well, I bet you couldn't.
You can't see anything, and they're working quite well, and I guess they're stable. We have a big foundation of slate, and Polat is quite happy with it. So that was, and the only other thing that every once in a while, they talk about hemp farm or medical marijuana. And there's not much else going on. Other towns are doing River Corridor stuff, and that's pretty much it. They do not meet before December.
They're not meeting in December, okay. Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Interesting about the slag heaps. Good use for them, I would think.
I have no idea. That isn't possible, but apparently it's working quite well.
Seems like, seems like a good place to put them, to me.
I mean, people are always concerned about, you know, the unsightliness of the solar fields.
Right.
If you have savings.
Well, and they're also always concerned about the unsightliness of the slag heaps. So you've kind of combined the two, and at least they're serving a purpose.
Yeah.
Huh.
We don't have any slag heaps here.
No.
Maybe some marble heaps.
Yeah, no.
That would be bad.
Yeah, it's interesting. I'll have to look next time I go through. Very interesting. All right, well, thank you. It's been good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
Bob Tobin.
Can I come join?
You certainly may. We can turn a microphone for you.
How are you guys?
There's nothing there. We'll move it so it's not kind of in our way.
Apologies on getting this out. I was very refined. So, tonight, what we want to do is just give you an update on the, kind of the state of the state of the town plan.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's, it's eight years, right?
More, if you can share. Oh, there are, I guess I thought they were.
Were you complaining about? Is it still tied?
I'm used to it. It was.
The new one we're looking on.
You cook while it works?
Yeah. No, I mean, of course.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Me too.
All right.
So, this, this first statement is correct, that the plan, the new plan is due May 2020, and it should be good for eight years. Ed Bove has been working with us for months now, and we've got portions of the plan updated. The main focus is going to be on the economic development piece. So you remember, we got a grant to help us with that, so hopefully that'll be a lot more meaty this time around with some good stuff in it. We did meet, I think, a month, two, two months ago, Planning Commission, and the focus for the, the rest of this year, what's left of it, in first quarter, is going to be getting the plan updated, you know, for the new plan and then working, I'll be working with Brad on the garage stuff, and I have that down here on the bottom, working on the annual plan report update and the ballot question that we want to put forward as well.
Mm-hmm.
So Brad and I have connected on that and exchanged a lot of stuff. One point on this first page still is that we have to have a public workshop and then also a hearing with the plan.
Right.
And then the commission has to do this, or the select board has to do the same.
Okay.
So that's going to be part of the process.
So you have a public hearing, and then the select board also has a public hearing, like we did for the River Corridor.
They have a public hearing, and then they present to the select board a plan, and then we have a public hearing.
Yeah, so it was the same deal as the River Corridor, the same process.
Yeah, same process.
Yeah, that just helps me visualize it.
We're also going to do a workshop, though, in front of that, to bring people in and share what we're doing.
Sure.
So it's like a February, March timeframe.
Okay, great.
Okay, so just the rest of this is just where we are on the existing plan, so, and this is all front and back here, saving paper. When you look at kind of where we are with the plan after four years, we canceled 20 of them, we completed 42. You can see the numbers there.
Mm-hmm.
And this, these last two, new plan, economic development study and new plan under consideration, there are 15 tasks in the plan for economic development that we didn't get to. Those are being rolled into the work that Ed's doing.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's 14 other ones that, they were really low priority, and we just didn't get to those. So overall, you know, we made some good progress. The slower piece breaks it out by the categories of what we canceled, completed, or is being kind of pulled forward. And these arrows here, you can see the areas that we didn't make as much progress in. So economic development had 15 tasks that we really didn't get to, and those, again, will be pulled in and assessed. We had three for energy, one for natural resources, three transportation, and then seven for the, the final one down there. So that's the report card. And then go to page three, and this is really just the summation of what we completed over the next two pages. And, you know, the headline at the top, this was done by, you know, the local government, but, you know, businesses, organizations, and, you know, a lot of individual volunteers were able to get this work done. And I've highlighted some of the things I've read here, like, you know, community beautification with the trees in the village and the memorial. We had a, you know, establishing a park, so the memorial itself is now a park for the village and the, and the town. The historical structures, a good amount of work done as well around that. Economic development, we did the capital budget. We did promote work at home on the website. There's a whole section out there around, you know, the internet connectivity that we have available here. We developed the town website. That was one of the first things we did. Promoting communication between residents, and this is focused on land use. So we upgraded and updated the complaint process, and that's available online now. For the river, or the hazard mitigation and flood, you know, we did try to get the River Corridor work done, and that took a lot of our time, but at least the town's taken a position on it, and we know where we stand. Renewing the village designation, that was one of the earlier things we did. A lot of the stuff in here is about designating the land for proper use, and the town plan is really quite good when you look at the land use maps, and you can see where we've designated certain functions. So that was something that was in the plan that we actually took care of when we finished the plan last time around, and that's going to get updated again. And page four, there was traffic calming measures, that, you know, stop signs in the village. We all remember what a uproar that was, but that was a measure we put in place. We looked at the town administrator position. We studied that and recommended not to proceed with that. Town office renovations is probably the biggest accomplishment in the plan. And then lastly, this implementation category, we've put in place a process now to really manage the plan and really see what we've gotten done and how well we're doing. The Planning Commission is meeting monthly now, you know, and originally, we were going to break it up into subcommittees and get together occasionally. We decided just all of us to work together month to month as we plow through the plan. And then the rest of this is just stuff that I mentioned that is either going to be economic development or stuff that's carrying over.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's just if you want to see the details of it. That's it.
So, as you're going forward, working on the economic development plan, as it sounds like that's going to be sort of the major focus for the new plan, or the, the major changes in the new plan, can you give us any sense of what that looks like?
Not really. I think we, we've had, what, two meetings already talked about it, Shelley?
We had, Ed actually did a study.
Right.
He reached out to someone who had done a study to see what kind of businesses that our town could support, and it was an interesting and not totally useful, I mean, shoe store was one of them. We could support a shoe store.
It was a free, it was free.
It was free, so, you know, you could pay for it.
Yeah, that's interesting, since, since I think, yeah.
We couldn't support any more grocery stores. We couldn't support any more gas stations, but we could support a shoe store, and there were some very odd little niche type marketing categories that we supposedly could support, so, you know, we took it with half the salt.
Random salt, yeah.
So do we have more feet than most people?
No, but without Linda, we don't have a shoe store.
Right, we don't have shoes. I mean, Linda serviced half the, half the town for shoes.
It's true. She did. That's, that's true.
You know, now that she's gone, people have to go out or go online to get it.
Right.
So that was recognized. That was, it was just interesting that they called that a shoe store and not, you know, clothing and hunting and all the rest of the stuff that she also provided.
I know.
It was just shoe store.
Oh, anything. If I needed nylons for a meeting, because I ran my stockings, all I had to do was call her. She didn't have them, she'd go get them. She was great.
Yep.
I miss Linda.
Yeah, that was neat, that store.
Yeah.
When Gaultal was owned, it was a good store, too.
Yeah.
That was back a long time ago.
Yeah, that was, that was a sad day when we lost that store, yeah.
We have a lot of work, though, still, on the, that was a very interesting conversation, but we didn't get a lot out of it, unfortunately.
Sure. Yeah, interesting exercise. Okay, well, so we'll stay tuned and learn more as you go. Great, well, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody have any other questions for Bob?
Good to see you again.
Same here.
All right.
Nothing. I can't believe it. Nothing?
Nothing from him. He's a slippin' idiot.
We need our work cut out.
Yeah, you two have a date to get to, get out of that little town garage, and I'd love to join you if that's a time when I could, but don't hold it up for me.
Probably Monday. We'll set a time if you're around.
All right, great.
I'll copy on the note.
Cool.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. See ya.
Um...
Brings us to you.
Yeah, brings us to the road commissioner.
Yep, Paul's next.
Everybody travels the Four Corners. We finally got our guardrail extensions on High Bridge.
So I'm told.
Finally.
You went too fast.
I go right by him.
Didn't notice.
I blinked.
She was close to goddamn fast, she missed the turn.
I just go right by him.
Didn't notice the big blocks are gone? Nice shiny guardrails?
She didn't have time enough to look when she was around that corner.
Being observed in this corner, I saw his suit.
She was close to damn fast around that corner, she didn't have time to look.
Check on her way home.
I, I will remember to look on my way home.
There's nothing on this end, so.
Yeah, on the uphill end, yeah.
Yeah.
On both sides, though, right?
Yeah. The smart things are, after you go by the bridge, so if you miss the bridge, you might hit the end.
Yeah. Well, that's good. That's great that the guardrails are up, and it's nice because we can also just let people know that that was not on our dime, that we ended up talking to the state about that, and they did end up putting up all, but they weren't in the original plan.
The state ended up doing it?
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's great.
That's good.
Yeah, good.
And other than these little piddly small storms, it's nickel and diming us to death. That's about it. And the road, as far as the road signs, or the finishing road survey to finalize it, it's just a matter of getting, you looked at Baker Brook, Scottsville Yield thing?
Yeah, I brought that with me in case anybody else wanted to look at it, but this is, this was our plan, remember?
Yep.
Remember this monstrosity? And I think where you were talking about, so we were talking about the corner of Scottsville Road and Baker Brook Road last time, right, and trying to decide what is there and what should be there, and according to our plan, I think this is the intersection?
Yep.
So is that, do we have that yield sign? But I think what you're saying is we need one somewhere along here, is that what?
I think if we put, I don't believe this one is in place. I'm not sure. And then, or it should be on this side, but, and we should have one there.
Over here.
Because that's where the complaint was coming, that even though Scottsville Road had to right away, they were coming down Baker Brook without even slowing down, so if we put a sign.
So we're thinking that we'll add a yield sign there?
It's not going to hurt.
Right.
And so we just got to talk with Charlie, and we just kind of come up with a yield.
If this one's not doing any good, could it just be moved, or it, or do you think we should have them in both places? This makes sense, because that's the road coming in, right?
Even though it's a right away, it's kind of like the Dambie.
There's a Scottsville Road coming onto Baker Brook.
Yeah, it's kind of like the Dambie-Polat Road, where you come in the straightaway, you've got to stop.
Right.
So.
Right, yeah, that's always been an odd one, too.
Yeah.
So then I think what you're saying is that at this point, if we were to pull out our ordinance, you've looked at everything, and it's just going through the language one by one. So were you, you were, you had suggested to me that maybe two or three of us get together to do that, and then we'd have a finished document to bring to people at the next meeting. Do you want to, Brad, you'd brought this up, do you want to volunteer to help go through it?
Sure.
To maybe, do you want the three of us to do it? Or Steve, do you have any interest in doing it?
I can or not?
It's up to you. I mean, I think it's probably good for two or three of us to do it, but...
Well, there's a lot of language that has to be built in, because there's only like four stop signs that are mentioned.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah. No, there's a lot of language that has to be built in, yeah.
We get two of them right here, down here in Nick's store, we take those two off.
Yeah.
Or two, we use it somewhere else, right?
Or use the post for yield signs.
No. Do you have time to do it, Steve? Do you want to do it, or you want, I, I do have time right now.
Probably better if you, if you've got time, it'd be better if you did it.
Okay, all right. And what we'll do...
It's going to be after Christmas.
Yeah, I think it needs to be after Christmas, and the three of us will, will do it, and then we'll be bringing it back to the full board to look at, and we'll get it to you before the meeting, so people have a chance to review it. How's that sound? And we'll do it right after Christmas, yeah. Okay, great. Maybe before we leave here tonight, maybe we can take a look at the calendar and see if we can come up with a date. So that was our progress on town speediness and signage, because that's all part of that, with putting that together. And then on our list here, we also had talking about the roads that might be discontinued, and what that is, is that comes out of our stormwater management plan. Remember that we had Stephanie Broke, I think I'm saying her name correct, bring to us? So last, at the last meeting, we registered concern about three locations, and one was Town Highway 7, which is the town highway that doesn't exist, it's just wooded. And I talked to Stephanie about that, because she, she has actually issued the final plan, and I was concerned, because the final plan came out, and I was afraid we'd missed our chance to make any adjustments. Turns out Charlie had taken her up to see Town Highway 7, and she concluded that there is no highway there, so therefore, there's nothing we need to do about it. So it is not in the plan, so we don't need to worry about that one. If we choose to throw it up at a later time, we certainly can.
So that's the revised plan that we got, I took that out.
This is the old copy, but the revised plan you, you got in your email. At least I got it in mind, and I think your name was on it.
Got a question?
Sure.
Where is this fictitious Town Highway 7 located?
It's up on Green Hill. And it's literally in the woods.
It's like the driveway to Green's Sugar House, right on the bend there.
Okay.
And actually, the road went then behind the farmhouse up over toward Tinmouth, so, at least on paper.
Yeah, it might be part of the original Stagecoach Road network.
Yeah, yeah, it might be part of that network, but it really, it is, it's, there's trees, you know, growing up in the middle of it.
Yeah, sure, I never, I hadn't heard of it.
Yeah, so for, it's on the map over there, if you want to take a peek.
I know, that's it.
And, but, but because of that, it's not included in the plan, so we don't have any, because the way this plan does it lays out that by 2022, then by 2025, and then by 2036, all the roads we have to bring into compliance. And if we had had to bring that road into compliance, that would have been something else, so. Do you have a question?
What was the plan we were referencing here?
So this is our stormwater management plan.
Part of the stormwater.
Yeah, so, so this is what the, the state is saying, you know, that what we have to do to bring all of our roads and sections of our roads up to compliance. The good news is that 80% of our roads are already in compliance, so, you know, our road crew's been working at this, but...
And that's in compliance with stormwater runoff? Are there other issues?
Yeah. It's, I, I believe it's the stormwater, it's the stormwater runoff, you know, issues. So that's, you know, it's all about controlling erosion and stormwater and everything else. It's in our interest, I think, is how we've discussed it, to bring these in, because, you know, this is going to prevent greater damage when we have these large storm events. So, but for instance, you might have seen the, if you go up on Colvin Hill, the backside of Colvin Hill, where the ditches are with the rocks in it on the side, those are all the new regulations, that that's what we're required to do when there's a certain slope, and I think it's just the slope that determines that, isn't it? So...
5%.
Yeah, and it's not all of our roads, it's just our hydrologically connected roads, so it's, it's roads that, you know, have water, you know, near or, or on them.
Is that available in the hard copy here, or you have to go online?
Um, I'm sure, you're welcome to take a peek, so you, if you'd like to look through this right now, you're more than welcome to.
I'd like to try a slow process, or I don't think, if you want to.
Sure. Well, Janice has, has a, I'm sure she can make a copy for you, and I could email you one if you wanted.
I don't give email.
Okay. All right, yeah.
I'm on my point.
So what you would ask Janice for is the road stormwater management plan, and as I said, this is the draft, but she did receive the final one, her name was on that, too, so the final copy should be there. And it does have lots of maps, which are kind of fun for those of us who process that way, and they, they show the areas where we're in compliance or partially in compliance or totally out of compliance, and they, and then in the back, there's a schedule that says, and the ones that are highlighted are the ones that are highest priority, that we have to do soonest, and there's a schedule as to what we have to do and by when. And so this is an important piece to help us with our budgeting, because we have to plan to do that work by the dates that are there, or we would fall out of compliance.
So you just take it, you know, deadlines, you know, no means?
Oh, yeah, there's deadlines.
No, there's, no, there's deadlines. So we have to do 15% of the roads by 2022. The good news is some of those we've already done, and, and if we've already done them, that's okay. They weren't going to say, oh gee, you did those and give us 15, you know, another 15%. So, but we have some that we have to do by 2022, then the next date is 2025, and then the bulk of them, the remainder, by 2036. So we have time to do them, and we are, as a matter of fact, Charlie asked me to come down yesterday and to sign two Better Back Roads grants, and those are grants for the work we talked about doing here. So if we receive those grant monies, then we can get a lot of help. So not all of this will come out of our own dime, which is helpful, too. And they'll stabilize our stream banks and roads and things, so that we hopefully won't have as many problems in the future.
And a lot of it is just sections of roads, it's not a whole road?
Yeah, you're welcome to look at the map now, and you can see that there, there's like, you know, all this green, and then there's a red section, and, you know, so they're just sections. And, yeah, so that's, but the three roads that were in the issue were, one, that Town Highway 7, and so that's not included, we don't have to worry about that. The other was Shortcut Road, which, you know, we've had the state folks come out who, who look at the hydrology of that and the rivers, and they've said that, you know, that's basically the river is reclaiming Shortcut Road, and that, that, you know, we've been advised that, actually, I'm not even sure they let us repair it, but they certainly are saying that it's not, not advisable to do the work on that, on that road. So I wanted to make sure Shortcut wasn't included in here, because of it suddenly said that we had to do, you know, $60,000 worth of work on Shortcut Road when, when the fish, fisheries folks are saying, and the water folks are saying not to do it. So that is not in the plan, so whatever we decide to do on Shortcut Road, we're free to do that.
Well, how does Shortcut Road figure into our state highway reimbursement?
It, it does. We've got to, we've got to take it out.
So we need to get rid of it.
We need, we need to be definitive about that, that if we're, and, and from what I've seen, and from, I think what we've all heard, and I, I went by and looked at it the other day in the, in that big rainstorm that we just had, and you probably look at it sometimes when you...
Three days.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, the problem is that water is coming up out of that bank, and, you know...
There's, there's another point to that, too. Tim and I were talking about that, and he grew up over there, he spent, you know, there for 56 years.
Yeah.
He said, he said he only explored his dad, that was part of the original road, Shortcut Road. He said, so where the, where the dips and dives started from, back then, their fill was stumpage, you know, a lot of organic material. He said that road's been in there for, who knows how long, 150, 200 years? So a lot of that stuff is rotted. So when that organic kind of rots, you get those dips.
You get those, those dips.
And then, then you have a nice avenue for them, you know, water or whatever.
Yeah, and it may be rotting under the surface, so that it's dipped, it's dipped a little, but what we've really got, we've got all these channels going underground, yeah.
But, you know, the, um, now I lost my train of thought just...
I'm sorry.
That was the original road that went across the bridge down Flower Brook, about...
I didn't know that, that's cool.
It's right along.
Yeah, that is, and I knew it was the original road just from, you know, poking around the historical stuff, but, you know, that's a, that's probably what started the whole mess.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, it's been two years with continual, and the, oh, I know where my train of thought was going, yes, it's down below the surface because all of the roads in Dandy, the backroads are crowned so high now. Um, if you stand on, if you go down on the side of the road and look up, you can see the extreme crowning on all the roads, so, yeah, it's way under the surface, but, you know, there's a number of feet of new fill, new material.
It's, um, so, when, when I've gone there to look, what's interesting to me is that if you, and you have to be really careful if you do this, I don't advise anybody that, that does this, but if you go down over the bank from that, um, you can see these sort of, um, large, in area, mudslides, and it's where, um, really fine silt and mud is coming out, which, which the water bringing it, right, just oozing out of the bank all the time. And so that, the reason I say be careful is it's not a stable bank, it's really not stable at all, even for, you know, my, my, my feet walking on it, it's not stable. So the other thing about Shortcut Road, I mean, I, I think we're all thinking that, that, you know, that, you know, the road is, i- i- it had some advantages, but it's a little, it is redundant with another road, it's not a road that we need, it's going to cost a huge amount.
Or to fix it, yeah.
And it's, you know, so I think that the idea is to, to look at, uh, at throwing that road up and doing it officially, I put in a call to John Frascher to find out what we need to do about that, and I think he's, I haven't, I didn't hear back from him yet, so, um, but I'm sure that I will. And then the other thing is that, um, I have not been able to get in touch with Woodwise, and I really wanted to do that so that we could see if we could take down some of those trees and make a little longer visibility, so that cars and, and buses and things coming out of there, um, that somebody coming down the hill from Pollitt would be able to, to see them sooner. Um, I have not been able to get through, I have left many messages on their machine with their corporate headquarters, um, so I thought, I was going to ask you all if you are okay with it, that I will, um, write them a letter and sign it, yeah, and send it as a certified letter. Because I do think that, that, you know, it would be a, um, I mean, I don't think it's a dire safety issue, but our school bus driver has identified it as an issue, and I'd like to address it, yeah, so...
And the other safety issue is the Shortcut Road, whether you like it being there or not, um, it was, when you're coming down the hill in a storm, snowstorm, ice storm, whatever, heavy weather event, water, it was gradual, you know, come off the road gradually and almost in a straight line, and going down to the bridge and making your turn. When you come off the main road, the Dandy Pollitt Road, onto the existing road, that's a sharp, a sharp angle, and I can't tell you, and, you know, I'm not, this is not a slam against the road crew, because, you know, they can't be everywhere every second of the day.
Right.
But if you get that point where they haven't been there, or they've been there and it's glazed over, I can't tell you how many times I've gone to make that corner crawling right by, and there's been accidents there as well, I mean, I flipped his car, um, last year in a snowstorm right there, right on the corner. I'm not sure who was trying to make the corner, whatever he did, that's where he ended up.
Yeah.
You know, so that's another safety concern, just the fact, and I know Loretta has experienced that, that sharp, that sharp angle off the main road, and if anybody's a decent driver, it would be her.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know.
She's got the school bus in the road for accident, which is...
Yeah, well, the other thing that we had talked about, um, is whether we would, some, some additional signage warning that that, you know, that there are cars entering there or whatever, that might, might be helpful.
Dangerous intersection or something.
Yeah, something like that.
Something, even at some point, um, some of that, um, ledge that's right there on the corners you're coming down there, so it could be bumped back. You know, I'm not saying, you know, go out and start dynamiting today, or do you have permission to throw in the land over, and I'm not sure who owns that little piece.
So do you mean the, the, the piece as you're coming out, up, to the right, coming down from Pollitt?
As you're coming out, yeah, so, so you're coming down, and yes, just right there, so instead of it being such a sharp turn, just break it back a little bit, something where you'd have the ability to make a gradual turn. Whether that's feasible or not, I don't know, but as a driver who drives that road every single day, I can tell you that, that has been an issue and probably will continue to be an issue.
Well, we could take a look at that, yeah, okay, great.
And the third road?
Um, the third road is, um, shall I wait for you to tape? Bingo, the third, the third road is the Easy Street from Spring down to the Bromley Road.
Richard property.
Ah, okay. Hi, Richard, I was wondering why you were with us tonight.
Yeah, I know, I know, it hurts a lot.
So, um, so the third road from Easy Street down is currently a class four road, according to Stephanie.
Three. It's not, class three summer.
Oh, it's class three now, okay.
It's class three.
Okay, all right, so it's currently class three.
I just talked that over with Charlie.
Okay, for some reason Stephanie looked at the map and she thought it was a four, so we'd better, I'll confirm that with her, but what she told me, I don't think it changes what she told us about that road. So that road does have some places that are, uh, it's hydrologically connected, and there are some places that are only partially in compliance, and we do, um, based on the classification, well, based on it being a class four, there's things we have to do, but maybe she'd adjust that if she knows it's a class three, so we'll, we'll talk to her. But either way, whatever we have to do on that road, we have until two thousand and thirty-six, so, so we have room with it, in other words, there's nothing in the plan that's overly locking us in on that. But I think, based on the information you all are giving, that I should call Stephanie and tell her it's a class three and make sure...
Well, I'll dig out my letter from the county attorney, where, where we went through the discontinuing the Title X process that made it the class three summer, I think we may remember that, the new support to have.
If you have that, if you have that, it'd be great to get a copy of that, and I can give that to Stephanie, and then what she'll do is she'll go in, I guess, I think she'd follow the same process as she said we would do if we had lowered it to, um, a class three. Then all we would have done is gone in and, we would have gone through it statutorily to lower it to three, and then they would come in and reassess, so she has it in now.
It was a three, which we received the state aid on, and after numerous meetings with the, with the regime and power at the time, it was agreed to by the regime and people on the road that it would remain a class three summer.
Okay, all right, and this...
And it received class three maintenance, um, in the last fifteen years, which that may contribute to your stormwater concerns, I don't know, I haven't seen the report.
Right, and so now my guess is that what the recommendations in the report are going to be are based on it being a class four, so I think what we'll have to do is have her reassess that. And, and then we'll find out what we need to do and what our timeline is on, on, on that as well. Do you, are there any problems on it?
It's spelled out in the plan what, what the concerns are with that section of the road.
I don't know that it says so much about the concerns as much as it says what the prescription is that was supposed to be done, and that's based on it's being a class four, so...
And if it is put in under a class three, it will probably require more work. Because class four...
The priority is class three.
Right, but not in this, because the girl thought it was class four, so she's...
Change your evaluation on the...
When she revises it to a class three, it may bring it up to where we have to do more work if there's sections that are hydrologically connected up there. And if that's the case, then it'll put it as a higher priority for us to work on.
And if we want to change its classification, we, we can't, we have time to figure that out, so if there's some reason that that was work that is, um, you know, more than we think needs to be done, and we want to change a classification, we can. But I think the first thing to do is to make sure that she knows what class it is currently, and see what the assess, what the recommendations are, and if you, I'll be, we'll be sure to get in touch with you and let you know what those are, um, and then we'll just all have to put our heads together on it and, and figure it out. The other, the other thing about Easy Street is the, um, the other end of it, um, where we all know there are issues, and, and, um, and that does have, um, a, uh, uh, earlier date for compli, bringing it in compliance, I think it's two thousand twenty-five in this.
On the hydrology, for the term of stormwater sediment, it's getting to the streams, there's more coming off the east side than there is the west side, and after even the most recent big event, which was last March or April, that was over there that next morning, and it was irregular, any sedimentation was coming from that road into Bromley Brook, as opposed to the other side. So, again, we'll get, see what she evaluates that, but...
Okay, well, we'll get back to her with what the...
So based on as a four, are we considering doing the repairs or whatever they call for, or discontinuing it?
Uh, no, we, I, there was no talk about discontinuing it, it was just a question as to, um, that we wanted it to be a classification, correct me if I'm wrong, please, um, we, we just wanted to make sure that it was a classification that, that aligned with and supported our intent for that road, which is that it's, it is an, it is an alternative emergency route as necessary, but it's not a regularly used, you know, route for Easy Street.
Yeah, because Charlie and I talked it over, and even though it's not in that great a shape right now, we did have to use it when the trees came down, um, I think your wife ended up using it to get out of there because they couldn't get out down on...
Well, I can't name the days, but the most recent one was when the trees came down at Jordan's Donuts, AKA Harry's Bromley, in May, maybe two years in May.
Yep.
For a lot of people, because there's a lot of people that live from there, I don't know how many people live at the donkey farm, but there's...
Yeah, there's a lot more people on that road than what there was thirty years ago, but we did the...
And then you, I guess, whenever the pipe broke, beginning at Georgia, you know, in the spring, another foot and people, and it got around that day, and there was a time when the water main broke by the brick house, and people...
Well, we, uh...
It happened in the winter, it's not going to work, but in the summer, it's a good alternative route.
It possibly could, because when, when I talked with Charlie, we decided whether it stays a three or a four, um, it is possible to get a road out of there to get back onto the Bromley Road, to get down onto the Brook Road in case of an emergency, so, either way, we're going to probably keep it where it is an escape route, even if we have to go up there and, you know, get it...
Well, even in the winter, you could open it up for a major emergency.
Right, if you have to, exactly.
As minimal as it's received in the last fifteen, actually, the last forty years, living with no maintenance.
Right.
Right.
It has remained a good alternative route.
And that's our goal.
I guess I'm not sure what you mean by if it remains a three or a four, if it's a three...
Well, we got, yeah, it's a three now, I mean, whether it stays a three or goes to a four, that's something...
Well, if it goes to a four, you gotta go through the Title X process.
Yeah.
Right, we'd have to go through a process, so I think I...
And the title four is not encouraged to the people on the road or, or adjacent landlord, because that puts the burden on the adjacent landlord.
Well, like I said, that's down the road to discuss.
Right, the, the point is that there's nothing in, in the plan that's going to make it, that, that stops our options, we have all the same options we had before, and the only things we do is based on, I think, common sense of, you know...
Well, I guess I'm a little surprised that it got this far, but the boardman said it is a three and not a four. I mean, if it's on the map, somebody should have got it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why, and, and maybe she misspoke with you, but I was just checking my notes when I was on the phone with her, and she said it's...
Or also known as a, um, ATV trail, which it's not, it's a class three summer road.
Class three summer road.
And the important thing to realize is that's the way the power lines come in.
Right, we know that, yeah.
The power lines come in from the west, they stop at Donkey Farm, and then all the people on the top get their power from Bromley Road.
Right, right, so class three summer road, yeah, so I'll get back to her and find out if, you know, if she indeed based these, um, recommendations on, on, on misinformation that it's a class four, then what is the actual prescription that's in here?
Do you let me know if you need that letter?
Yeah, um, I will let you know if I need the letter, it's good to know, it actually would be probably a good thing to...
I've got a whole facility on the whole, on the whole process.
Yeah, it might be good, would you just, if you get a minute to bring a copy, have Janice make a copy and just put, put it, so we have it on file here?
Tomorrow, and I'll get the copy on the floor.
That'd be great, good, all right, um, good, uh, let me see if there's anything else, um, Shortcut, uh, um... So that's when I placed the call to John, yeah, those were the only three that were on that, um, the other thing that came up, um, this week was the question about Parker Road and the three thousand feet of fill, um, that, um, so the Army Corps of Engineers has issued its notice, um, about, uh, the work on Parker Road, so that's a notice that goes to other agencies like EPA and Fish and Wildlife and other things. And they had called us just wanting to make sure that we knew that the, we will be responsible for removing the fill around the temporary bridge. Um, my understanding is that the state is removing the temporary bridge, they put the temporary bridge in, but the fill evidently, um, somebody had a conversation with, uh, I think they said they were dealing with somebody named Chad at, I'm assuming it's Cold River, because they're the ones that have the, um, uh, that we awarded the contract to. Um, and he said that it's not in his scope of work to remove the fill, so we must not have included it in our RFP, um, so...
We put it in.
We put it in.
The other ones are about all the fill in.
We, we put the fill in, yeah, so that's probably why, good point.
And we had planned on taking it out and using it, once they get their headwalls, and taking it from both sides and filling in behind the, the headwalls.
So as long...
That's what our plan was, but...
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, they just wanted to make sure that we knew that that was on our dime, that that's not part of what FEMA is going to pay us for, so it sounds like we've known that all along, and we have a plan for that.
Because that was agreed to at that meeting at Parker Road when we were all there.
When we all met, at the road, okay, okay, good, good, then, then I think we're all on the same page with that, and, um, she went ahead and issued the notice, and, you know, I told her that I thought we were on the same page with that, so, um, and then we already talked about the Baker Brook yield sign, and that's it, that's all I have on my...
So I have one more question, and this is just kind of an abstract, you spoke about, um, throwing up town highway seven maybe in the future, um, is there any benefit to hanging on to that?
Don't know, I mean, that's one of the things, yeah...
The throwing it up, I mean, you don't use it, it doesn't exist, but the throwing up of a road, Richard, you know more about it than I do, there's more to it than that.
Oh, sure, because the landowners on either side have to be involved, I mean, it may be an issue for them because right now they technically own a road that has, a, a piece of property that could have road frontage, on the other hand, if it's technically a road, then it also means they can't post it, they can't have privacy through there because it's a through fare, um...
And the same, the same with Shortcut Road, if you don't, if that road goes away, um, would you throw that road up, would you leave it as is? I, I don't know, I don't understand the legalities of...
Yeah, that's why I have a call in to our attorney, because I think we need some, to get some advice, yeah.
Well, if you have a road, the state makes you maintain it.
Right.
And they face your reimbursement for highway...
I understand that, and if you discontinue the road, that takes it out of the equation for the state, I get that, but I do believe there's a difference between discontinuing a road and throwing up a road, and I know we had a talk at the planning commission years ago about...
I'm not sure if you...
About the benefits of some of these, like, forgotten roads that were no longer...
Right, there's been a lot of talk about those.
They've been discontinued, but there still was, you know, a reason to, to keep them in the records or to not.
Right.
I think thrown up is just another way of saying discontinuing, but in order to throw it up and discontinue, whichever term we use, you go through the Title X process, which includes meetings, hearings, certified mail vote, station of the day, landlords, and a lot of talk, and a lot of time.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't some kind of benefit, that if you threw up a road, if it was indeed something different, you weren't shooting yourself in the foot.
Yeah, I, I think...
And I think the difference between throwing it up and discontinuing it is if we discontinue it, we can come back to it, if we throw it up, you can tell a stone pound salt.
Discontinuing, I'm pretty sure you'll get it up, you could give it up, you could throw it up and give it back.
That, that was my understanding, there was a difference, and I very well could be wrong because I don't know.
Well, I'd be happy to ask that question specifically to John, my little experience I've had with it, I, 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 I had thought that when you discontinue a road, that the official term for it, the expression is to throw it up, and I thought it was one of the same, but it may not be, so we'll, we'll find out. And I do think the answer to whether there's advantage, I think there's advantages and disadvantages, and I think there's advantages and disadvantages depending on who the party are, you know, are they the landowner, are they the town, or whatever, which is why there have to be the hearings and the discussions.
Right.
Because I think it affects everybody differently and trying to come to some, come to some consensus on it, I think it's...
Last, last course was what puts it on hold in pattern, it puts all the burden on the landlord or adjacent landlords, and it gets a down-up hook for any expense and maintenance or anything, and I think it's pretty much, they call it landlord or user, user maintain, which doesn't happen unless you're a man, you're having to be the adjacent landlord, like I say, it, in my opinion, puts the burden on the landlord or adjacent...
According to stormwaters...
You can always reclassify it, but I think, I'm not sure if you have to go through the process again, but, yeah.
According to the stormwater plan, we have to do certain maintenance on class four?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not kind of did it because I haven't been that involved in the last fifteen years, and I know the state had an initiative, let's say, a year or so ago, they were encouraging the towns to go through and inventory and do condition checks, is that right, Paul? You know, on, on a class four, I'm not sure what their voting was.
Well, I think what I understood it was if you got class four roads, that should be discontinued to do it, before people start building, and you have to ma, start maintaining roads, because it is, it is quite a process, um...
So that would make the road the difference between the town road and the driveway.
Right, and, and it is, I think Steve's right, that in here, basically, they are saying that if we have class four roads, we do, the town does have responsibility for, it's not all on the landowner, so...
Not, 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 unless it's changed in the last fifteen years.
Well, it may have changed is what I'm saying, because they're clearly showing, you know, that, that we would have some responsibility for them, yeah.
Fifteen years ago, it was discussed putting that section in the class four, and that, that was the definition in order to monitor the landowners and the town's responsibilities, it's pretty much, in my opinion, a short, short course.
Well, that sounds like a question that I should, I should double check with Stephanie when I get back to her, and I let her know that it's now a class three seasonal, right, summer, you said?
I believe it's a term.
Uh-huh, and, um, and then, um, class four, landowner or town? Okay, I'll get back to you on that.
What, what was the last part of the landowner?
So on a class four, who's responsible, the landowner or the town? Does the town have responsibility for a class four, because if, from the...
I believe that the old terminology was user maintain, so...
Yeah.
But I think, in my opinion, it puts responsibility on the landlord unless they didn't care.
Do they list the class in here, um, slope, crown, road type, uh, please, the road type shows crown, status, what we need is probably schedule, so they're not, she's not listing it, so wherever she looked to find out what she thought the class was of that road, it was not on this, um, document, so, so I'll have to, um, have that conversation with her. But either way, that particular road, um, is not in the plan, so, um, because, because she wasn't going to put it in the plan because it may be on paper a road, but in practicality, it's a forest, so, yeah, yeah, so, um, yeah, anything else?
We jumped over a couple of these already.
Well, yeah, we hit, we hit those two, so I, that... Well, yeah, we hit, we hit those two, so I, that, we're now down to some other business, signing our NECR e-cycles agreement.
For your discontinued road is, is sort of working in the same agenda item as Stormwater?
Um, so, yes, so we were talking about, um, we were talking about the, um, the, um, roads that, um, are... We're not, so, it's not that we are discontinuing them, but we're talking about, well, the shortcut road, we're talking about potentially discontinuing, so-
How does it relate to the-
It relates to the Stormwater Management Plan because that spells out what we, what we have to do. Um, you know, what the prescription is that we have to, um, do for all of our roads between now and the year 2036. And, um, we were looking to make sure that we didn't have, um, roads included in here that didn't exist, or that we anticipate not existing in the future like shortcut road. No, thank you, thanks for asking. Let me dig up the e-cycle thing while... Oops, um... Uh-huh, so, oh, um, one other thing in roads, it does say that since the high bridge guardrails are done, that if, um, it says, Charlie says okay to sign if board doesn't have any problems, so this would be something that would sign off saying that high bridge is done. So, it's work on the above noted project, Town Highway One, beginning at 2.830 miles west, blah, 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 blah. Was found to be performed within the requirements of the plan and specifications by the resident engineer. The project has been completed with the municipality and has had the opportunity for input at the final inspection. So, this is the document we were gonna sign when we did the final inspection on the bridge, but we found the guardrails weren't there, we refused to sign it because we wanted the guardrails. So, if we now are happy with our guardrails, we should have a vote to sign.
Well, if you didn't see them, you better look at them.
I know, I am willing to take your words for it.
Any of course we sign it?
Okay.
I second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Yeah, I know, so we-
This is, uh, under the road commissioner's report?
Yeah, it's under the road commissioners, and we are, um, signing, let's see if I can give you some-
We're signing off on high bridge.
Yeah, we're signing off saying that, that, act of the whole, that the high bridge project has been completed to specifications. It looks like they only need one signature. Today's 12th, right?
Yep.
Um, then, alright, that was, what's this, so... This is our Electronics Recycling N C E R, um, Agreement. So, this would be to continue our, um, recycling, uh, contract, um, so, the N C E R and Collector are parties to the Vermont State Standard Plan. So, this is the, um, and this is subcontract, contract extension, the contract is hereby extended for an additional and annual period, so extends our current contract for another year to December 31st, 2020. Um, effects of the extension, except as expressly amended by this extension, the party's performance and the contract shall be in accordance with the original terms. So, there's no change in terms, it just extends our e-cycles, um, agreement with the National Center for Electronics Cycling.
Any questions we sign it?
I second it.
Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, just wondering, what does the acronym NECR stand for?
National Center for Electronics Recycling. Yeah. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Um, and then, alright, there's something else in here, let's see what this is. Um, so we can bring this up under other business, um, and other people might have other business, but I'll bring this one up under other business. So, it lists here that we've got two entities that are asking for permission to, um, to get a, an appropriation from the town, so those are the items that we bought, um, vote on individually at the end of the town, um, well, they're at the end, they're in the town report, but the items we vote on individually on ballot, in the ballot box. Um, and one of them is the Rutland County Humane Society, um, they're asking to be included, and, let's see, do they say how much they would be, um... I'm not sure they're saying, um, we are, also serve the community appropriation, I just wanted to. Oh, it's, I don't see that this attached as our report for 2020, you know the right recipient. So, um, I, I'm a little confused because the note I have here says, do, do we want a signed petition to have these two included in organizations requesting funds? This letter, I'm not seeing requested funds, um, it is interesting though, it says that, um, um... "The Rutland County Humane Society provides shelter and care to companion animals while finding loving families for those at risk or homeless. Um, we also serve our community by providing information and referral services to people dealing with animal issues. The, um, Rutland County Humane Society, uh, Shelter is the largest program of the agency, taking in more than a thousand animals in 2019. Our agency is funded through fees for service, town funding, donations, and special events. No funding comes from the state or federal government or national organizations. We sincerely thank those who support our operations, we can only save lives with your help. The Rutland County Humane Society took in 12 animals from Danby in the past year, please call their website." So, they're not asking for a specific amount, so I think if we're going to, I think we'd wanna get back and ask them what they want for a dollar amount on the petition. And then the other one is an organization that I'm not familiar with, it's the Royal Fire, Rural Fire Protection Task Force, and it appears that this has everything to do with, um, dry hydrants. So, on behalf of the Rural Fire, Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force, I'm writing to request your support of the Vermont Rural Fire Protection, RFP, interesting, confusing an acronym, program formerly called the Dry Hydrant and Grant Program. So, I don't know if this is the same dry hydrant, I don't know if we have dry hydrants in town, I don't know if the, our fire department went through this program to do them, or if this is something different, but they're asking, um, to have a hundred dollar appropriation. And I guess, I would think that anybody who asks, our policy is that they need to fill out a petition and get a certain number of signatures from the town. So, I think we would just, um, have Janice get back to them and let them know that if they want to be included, that they need to go through that process before our town report is printed. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Might be a good idea to just give a can of salt?
Yeah, in terms of, in terms of that one, because-
It has to be by that deadline in January when petition's up to be out.
Right, they, they, I think it's January 23rd or something, but there, there is a specific deadline, and Janice can give them those, those dates. But it's true, I mean, um, because if this, if we go through a different program for a dry hydrants and this doesn't, isn't relevant to us, then I, I don't, you know, I think we would want to make sure people knew that, so, um, yeah, would anybody, um, is anybody here on the fire department? Anybody here see Ken regularly? Anybody got, to get down that way?
I can ask.
Would you ask him? Yeah, because you weren't gonna ask him about the, something else too here, okay, good. Um, any other business?
On Front Porch Forum, I read that our dump is gonna be open on Christmas Day. Is that a mistake, or?
No, if you're coming at the beginning of the meeting, yeah.
That's what he wants to do.
So-
I, I double checked it, because I thought it was a misprint after I talked, and Paulette said that she discussed it with Cliffy again, and he wants to be here on the 25th and the 1st. I'm like-
As long as it's his choice, I shut my mouth.
Well, that's what I was gonna bring up, that we probably should bring it up again-
We should let people know.
And now, here that it will be opened on Christmas Day and New Year's.
Well, the full story is that you offered him another day.
Right.
Yep.
And he chose not to do it.
He chose not to take it.
Right.
But I, to me, it just makes no sense, because I-
It made no sense to me.
The last thing I can imagine anybody doing is-
I called Paulette this morning, and I'm like, did you misprint it? Or, she said, no, that's what he wants.
I thought it would've said that, that it was closed.
That's what I thought, because-
So, so, so the, the issue is that, um, um, yeah, it's, it's his, it's his choice, and we try to work with him on that because he doesn't get paid holidays and things, because that's not part of his union contract.
Yep.
And so, what we try to do is work with him, because we appreciate Cliff a lot, and we appreciate, you know, that he does this work for us, and this appears to be his choice. Um, I think what's important is that people know that they're, and it's posted, and so let's post it, because I know myself, um, you know, there have been years when a lot of stuff builds up around Christmas, if you have family and children and things, and people might be willing to drive out to get rid of some of that, so, um-
Christmas Day maybe not, but the day after, I would think the 26th would be more, but-
Yeah.
I will run it by him one more time, but I, I don't wanna push, you know, he's made the choice twice, so.
Right. Right, and Christmas is on a Wednesday, so the worst comes to worst, it's open again, it's at-
That's his normal day, so-
Right.
Maybe he just wants to keep on his normal schedule.
Yeah. I could see putting it off to Thursday, but-
Is it part-time to work on a farm?
No.
Not part-time.
No, he's part-time, so he doesn't get, um, paid holidays or, you know, any benefits like that. So, what we try to do is, is just work with him to make a schedule that works, you know, for him. Um, because we're obligated to give him three days that week, um, that's, that's, you know, we feel we don't wanna penalize him because, you know, he shouldn't lose money, but he doesn't get, um, time and a half or extra money for working a holiday. So, and he doesn't have to work that day, he could work Thursday, he could work Friday, we'd let him work any day, but evidently, that's what he's chosen. So, um, yeah, well, so, if, if anybody's watching and they wanna know dump hours, we'll, we'll confirm that-
I'll post it on Danby Families.
And it should be posted on Danby Family, it's in the Front Porch Forum. Yeah.
Again.
Yeah, okay. Um... I have one other quick item of other business, which is our budget, building, putting our budget together. Um, I talked with Doug today, and, um, we think we need one more meeting to finalize the things. He got, he, he's managed to pin down some of the numbers, um, that were still sort of outstanding. Uh, I had a few others that we're still waiting on, actually, Manchester Rescue Squad, um, Jim Salz, we have, giver, has not given, gotten back to me yet with the new number on that. Um, and then I think we, um, has the Cemetery Commission finalized the number?
No, we're having a meeting on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, so what I thought maybe we should do is schedule a budget meeting, um, maybe next week, and then we can put the budget to bed next week? If we did at the end of next week? Okay.
I don't see why we can't have it like we did in November, um, before our regular January meeting, we're still on Monday of time to-
As long as we've got time for, before the printing of the annual report.
The report can't be printed until after all the petitions are in and whatnot, so that doesn't happen until, uh, early February.
So, the only thing I'm not sure of is, um... I think that, I think that, um... So, everything we've been working off for our budget process, this seems to be in the same order that our town report is now, right? See, before, remember when Dick did it, we had, um, his spreadsheet was different, and they needed time then to type this up or whatever, but I think that this is an ongoing process, so I don't think there's gonna be a time crunch. I, I'll tell you what, though, let me just double check that with Doug to make sure, um, and as long as that's so, then we'll do it before our January meeting. What is the date of our January meeting, does anybody have a calendar, what?
So...
Anybody else, can you see it?
I can hear January.
Here we got January, so January, it will be January 9th, okay. That should be plenty of time, yeah. So, 6 o'clock, January 9th, works for me. And if any, as, if anybody's looking through this and there's any other things that, uh, you know, um, that come up, let us know. But I think we're, we're down to just a few things, and then, um, and to let folks know where we are now, with everything that was put in so far, and there might be, um, we're at .582, so, um, so it would be an increase. Um, but I think one of the things that we've been discussing in our budget meetings, that people, you know, we've tried to keep costs down for the town, and we've been level funded or less, you know, for years now, but the costs of goods and services have gone up to the point where, you know, if we're going to, um, you know, we just, we just, you know, have to make some increases. And, and we hear it from people, you know, we're caught between a rock and a hard place, because I hear from people that they don't want their taxes to go up, and I certainly understand that, I don't want mine to go up either, but we also hear from people that are, you know, upset about the, you know, the roads, or, you know, um, services or things, and, and, you know, wanting services, and those things cost money, so.
Yeah, and there's been deferred maintenance.
Yeah, and there's been deferred maintenance, which we, we're chipping away at, so. Um, alright, um... Any other business to come up with?
Did you ever get the trucks all calibrated for salt, or do you still just let, put it right on like the Uta though? They've gone through 200 ton already.
No, we've had about six, six regular storms already, so, not counting, uh-
Yeah, but, uh, I talked with Paulette, and they, uh, said they put 250 pounds down to a mile.
I don't know, I don't ride in a truck, so.
And, the trucks, if they get a 20 ton load, they get through one load, one storm, so that's putting down a ton to the mile. They got 20 miles of, like that?
Don't know, but I'm getting phone calls, the roads aren't taken care of, so, what do you do?
Um, it is interesting, the calibration issue, because remember the guy that came to talk to us about the tanks or whatever? And he said, I just remember that conversation, that, um, he talked about calibrating it so that, so that, you know, it puts out the, an optimum amount to do the job, but not too much at any one spot. And I remember talking that, that time, I think Charlie said he didn't know how to calibrate them.
Yeah, that's what he said.
So, maybe we need to see if somebody can come in and look at that for us.
Worth a try, because-
Yeah.
The thing is, they're putting down so damn much salt, that then the roads are all just slimy, and then they're plowing the salt over in the ditch. I mean, they put it down, they plow it in the ditch, I mean-
Well, they're not putting it down both ways now.
Yes, they are.
Well, they're not supposed to be.
Well, they are.
Well, I, I'm not riding with them, so I can't tell you.
Yeah, I see them.
Like, they're not supposed to be, and they said that they're not, so I'm taking their word for it.
Well, you just, the road, you see it on both sides.
And then I get phone calls and says our roads aren't as clear as the other roads, because we're not taking care of them.
Well, the other thing that we could look into would be running clear lane, which works at a colder temperature, and we could use less of it.
Yeah, see, we're, we're using too much of it and blowing it right off, because it's not working, it's just sitting there, and you're just-
Well, is Paulette using the clear lane, or is they, or do you know what they're using?
I don't know, I, I didn't ask them.
I mean, and, and, you know, I don't know who can, um, help us calibrate them, but it does seem like a, um-
Well, if you're willing to pay the money to buy the treated salt, I'm sure whoever you're buying the treated salt from would be willing to send somebody here.
That's what that guy said, but, yeah.
Because-
But we're not buying from that guy, so-
Right, I know.
If we're willing to go to clear lane or a different treated salt, then Charlie can ask the salesman if somebody can come here to calibrate the truck, or show him how to calibrate the truck.
Yeah, because it should be calibrated, there's no need for them-
Well, who does that in Paulette?
He didn't, no, no, he didn't know.
He, uh, that small truck is set up with calibration right on it.
Ah.
It's, so, they can just set it for 250 pounds to the mile, or whatever they want, and he goes so fast, I guess, I don't know, he was, he was telling me about it.
That must have been the speed.
Said it works pretty good, that it's well worth the, getting it done. Because last year, they said they used three, less than 300 ton. For the whole season last year, Paulette, so, we're wasting a lot of salt there, huh?
Sometimes their roads reflect that too, because I was trying to look from Nansh's route through Paulette, and they were not always good.
No, nobody's roads are always good, I mean-
And, yeah, I understand what you're saying about the roads all turning to slime, except, especially the back roads. I mean, Westside was horrid at the last storm, I mean, you could drive it on ice, and you could drive it in mud.
Yeah.
And there was really nothing you could do.
Oh, no.
I mean, it was terrible, but, you know, maybe that was too much salt, you know- But, you know, maybe that was too much salt, you know, not sure. But I'm sure there's pros and cons to both.
Why don't we use clear lane? What, remind me what the...
The price.
Cost.
Because everybody was complaining it was too expensive. But when you put regular salt down at, is it 10 degrees, Paul? At least 10 degrees, it doesn't work.
10 or 15 or something.
Never worked under 20, was what I was told years ago.
But clear lane is supposed to work down 15 below.
See, and this other salt, if it's not working, they're just putting it on and plowing it off.
Right. If it's below 10 degrees or 15 degrees and it's not working, you're wasting it.
Yep. Yep, because they might as well put sand down.
Which was what that guy that was here was telling us, that with his chemical, because he was using magnesium chloride.
Magnesium chloride, yeah.
That we could still buy the, the regular salt and use his product to then treat it instead of buying clear lane or a different treated product, we could treat our own.
Right. But then we needed to buy all the equipment and everything to do that.
Well, we didn't have to buy the equipment, we had to guarantee that we'd buy his product for three years.
Right, and then he'd bring the equipment, right.
And the equipment was brought here for us to use.
Well, I think we ought to just check, check and see what that salt would cost us, how much difference.
If we went with the clear lane?
Yeah.
And the thing with the clear lane is if we're going to consider that, we've got to do it right off because if we're not on their list by a certain time, you're not getting on the list.
Well, would somebody like to look into the price of that and, and if we think that we need to act quickly, we could, well, we could call a special meeting.
Well, either me or Paul can talk to Charlie tomorrow because Charlie should have the numbers.
Yeah, Charlie's on vacation though, so I don't know.
I get hold about them.
I think there's something to be said though about that calibration because it seems like we're putting down an awful lot of sand too. I mean, you look at these roads and they're, you know, for these storms that we've had, we've got a lot of sand on the road already.
We've had a lot of storms too, I mean...
I know, I know, but, you know...
These one-inch snowstorms, we have to go out, which we never did before, because people do not drive slow, they do not have winter tires, they expect us to keep the roads maintained looking like gravel and that's what they are now. I mean, going up Corey Hill is just like a gravel road with stone. But people are getting up and down the hill and also, what do you do?
Yeah, I really wish people would understand all-season tires are not winter tires.
They're three-season tires, I've said that from day one. And if you look in the police manual, it tells you, "Drive safe, drive slow, winter tires."
Winter tires.
Not all seasons, they don't recommend all seasons.
No, I know.
But we're dealing with people with all seasons and they want their roads so they can get in and out of these back roads, so...
You have a big one.
Tell me about it.
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you another one, I have studied stones.
Yeah, you're very smart, I know.
That's what I got.
That's what I've got on my trucks, studied stones. I know.
But I was told by a tire guy they don't work on cars. I have to disagree, but it's just heavy trucks.
I've got one on trucks too. I've got one on trucks, I have one on RVs, I've got one on cars. They work a lot better than second guessing.
I've, I've runs those tires on cars for years.
I have.
They work fine.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
But the ones that are...
Especially the way I drive, I'm a good test.
Some of their all-seasons are wore out. Or their three-seasons. And they want us to maintain the roads, so what do you do? If you don't maintain them, they go off, end up getting sued.
Yeah. I know Gary was, you know, he comes up home, comes up Paul, you know, Paris Hill and I can't tell you the nights that I'm hearing, "Rrrr, tire's spinning" as somebody's trying to get up that hill and Gary in his little Honda Civic just drives right by. It's not four-wheel drive, it's nothing like that, he's just got decent snow tires.
Yeah, these guys, they just don't want to be bothered, they just complain.
Yep.
Oh, well, so, will you talk to Charlie and let's, and if there's information that just maybe shoot us all?
I'll talk to him with the calibrating on there too.
I'm not, like I said, I don't ride in the trucks anymore like I did when my son drove...
Well, I know his answer about the calibrating was that he didn't know how to do it and it might also apply to the sand as well. I mean, the, the rate at which it comes out, if there's something we can do about that, maybe there's somebody that Charlie could call, the state that can help them or...
Seems the old state would have somebody.
I think you'd have somebody.
If we're going to have somebody come down to calibrate the trucks, I'd like to know why, because I won't be here.
Yeah. It's fine. Can you and Charlie make some calls and see if we can find out? I think that'd be great. All right.
Yeah, the other thing is, I'd like to see them guys start work at seven and get done at four like they're supposed to on that union contract.
The contract, I think, gives them the option.
Yeah, but they're, they shouldn't be eaten and plowed at the same time. They're not paying attention to the road.
So...
That's a safety issue there.
Yeah, well, interesting because the union is all over safety.
That's right.
Didn't care about that one. Um, yeah, I guess...
Charlie says he eats on the fly, well, you're, they plowing, they're eating.
Yeah, um, so I think that that's something that we can't change until the next union contract.
It's in the union contract though, it's in the contract from seven to four. We ain't changing it, they're changing it.
I think that the union contract, I can pull it up. Hold on a second.
I checked, looked on it five, six times, that's what it says.
But I think it gives an option that we have to honor. Did it not say that?
I didn't see that part.
I see. Yeah, fine, contract, that's the hard part. So this would be under, uh, hours of work should be page seven. Eight hours shall constitute a standard day's work, 40 hours shall constitute a standard week's work. Normal hours will be 7:00 AM until 3:30 PM, Monday through Friday.
If they take no watch.
The time for beginning work on any shift shall be fixed by the town and may be changed from time to time provided three days' notice is given when possible. That's important. If we need to change the start time because we have a storm coming in or something, we are able to do that. There'll be a 15-minute break in the morning and 30-minute break for lunch, which will be optional at the employee's discretion. So the 30 minutes for lunch is optional at their discretion. Um, seven, eight, 3:30, so the seven to 3:30 is the eight and a half hours, so, um...
You get a 15-minute break in the morning, a 15-minute in the afternoon, plus a half-hour lunch.
They get a 15-minute in the morning and a half hour for lunch.
Yeah.
They don't get a break in the afternoon. So those are the terms of the contract as we have now. We'll be renegotiating the contract and we can make a note to bring that, you know, we can talk to, you know, whether it's something we want to renegotiate, but, but our hands are kind of tied for, for the short term.
Because it works, the way it works out, on Friday, they're, they're out of here by noon or a little after and every, every time we have a storm, then they come back in at 1:00 and then they get their four-hour call out and they trail for a hour or two.
Why would they be out of here by noon on...
Fridays, by noon, they're, they're due the gun by noon, a quarter after.
I thought it was 1:00.
No. And now they're coming in, if they come in at quarter of, punch in quarter of, they, they get, they take that 15 minutes and for five, five days.
Well, so let's, um, let's, uh, let's ask Charlie to keep track for us and give us a record of what people are doing and, and we'll, you know, take a look at that and, and let's ask him to do that this, this winter so we know what the hours are and how they're working and then we can consider it next time we negotiate the contract. But it is what it is in the contract now. Our contract expires on December 31st, 2020. So we will be starting to renegotiate the contract probably next fall, 2000 and, yeah, probably, um, we'll probably be starting August, September of next year and so that's the time that we would need to bring this up. But it would be really helpful to have a good, solid record of what the practices have been so that we know if it's a problem that needs to be addressed or if it's not.
Do you not have a time clock?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we've got a time clock.
But once you punch in, that doesn't mean that you're actually working, it means you're putting it far in.
I mean, you would have a...
Because a lot of times they punch in before 7:00 and they go down, you know, not back here till what, quarter to 8:00?
Sometimes.
Sometimes it's quarter to 8:00 they come back.
So there's your, if you, if you use a written record compared to the time clock record, there's your discrepancies.
Yeah, it's a big one.
Very difficult to be, I don't, I'm not usually in town that time day.
No. Well, what we should do is, is try to, try to, to get, get a record of what it is. I think, so I think that the issue that you brought up is whether or not, because of the way we've organized the work week, whether or not they're then automatically getting overtime during what would, most of us would consider a normal work day. Is that sort of what you're getting at? Yeah, and I think that we could ask him to keep, just to keep track and show us some records to see because, to be sure that that's really a problem. And if it is, then we can bring that evidence, you know, to a negotiation and we can take a look at the hours and adjust, you know, accordingly. Again, it's a negotiation, so we may or may not be able to adjust the hours, but, but if, if it's not working for us, I think what's important is to have actual documentation of that, if that's the fact.
Well, we could as, although everyone he's checked, yeah, when he punches in, punches out, we can check on that, all in records still.
Right. Well, and we got cross-reference those. When people punch in and punch, and then, and then the paycheck that corresponds to that would show whether there's overtime or whatever, but that could be a pretty time intensive thing. I, I think the first thing to do would be just to have a conversation with Charlie and ask him, you know, to, to be paying attention to that and letting us know when that's happening.
Yeah.
Let's, let's start there. We can always look at the records, but let's start there and, and, and see what he says. And then Brad, did you bring up a start time issue with the guys? Is that what you're saying? Okay, I'm sorry, I misheard.
No, um, they punch in at a quarter of, but then they go and have coffee and they're back at 7:30. So that's like 45 minutes off, but, so I don't know if, if that other break from the afternoon's being, but you said they don't get an afternoon?
They don't get an afternoon break, so...
So they're taking the break at lunch and putting it all up front in the morning? Is that what's happening?
Don't know, I think they're trying to find out, yeah.
I think we, we have to ask them. 30-minute break at lunch is optional at their discretion, so if they are doing that, then they need to be working until 3:30. And I don't know, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, as I know, they're still working by 3:30. I don't look at the time cards, but...
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm happy to sit down with this and with Charlie and have a conversation and, and see, you know, what, what their current practice is and let them know what our concern is in terms of, you know, whether this is working for us and that we want to just sort of get some data to see and, and find out, you know, how it's, you know, I mean, always how it's working for them, how it's working for us and have a conversation about it. I'm happy to do that.
Well, we went through this before with the punching in, because the way the time clock's set up, they punch in five, they can punch in five minutes before and it don't get counted as overtime. So I don't know if they're punching in like Brad says at quarter of.
I haven't, I haven't looked at the time cards, I just see what time people are running.
But I know they were getting overtime, a lot of, a lot of extra overtime and we put a stop to that.
Right.
And so they, they weren't punching in until that, and even if they got here early, they couldn't punch in because the way the union contract was, they got paid, if they punched in at...
Quarter to seven, they got paid for the whole...
Six, six minutes of, they got an extra, whatever it was, 15 minutes overtime. And this, this went on for a long time.
Long time, yeah.
And I thought we had that all squared away, so I, you know, if somebody's saying they're not doing it, if they do say it, they better have proof of it before they, you know, we're going to get, we're going to get raked over the coals.
Why don't you and I sit down and talk with Charlie?
I thought they were, I thought they were doing it and as I know, they were taking their 15 minutes as soon as they left here. I know they, um, they changed their place to go and they were coming back in a reasonable time and getting on, on the road.
Yeah.
But I haven't been checking on them, I can't be down here every minute checking on them, so I just hope that they were doing what they've been doing all along, so...
Well, they know, they know the terms and they, they're, they do have latitude to mix and match how they do it. So I think we just need to sit down and have a conversation with them to find out, you know, how their, how their current practice is and see how that, you know, aligns and, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I think we'll have to wait till Charlie gets back from vacation, that's the only thing, so...
But if you've got a 15-minute break, that doesn't mean that you drive to a destination and then get 15 minutes of the break.
Right, no, it's, it's a total, sum total, that's right. Yeah, 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 no, so...
You know, discrepancy, and, and I'm not saying this is it or not, but if they have to go to Abbott's to get fuel and they incorporated it, that would, you know, they run down, got fuel and then took their 15-minute break.
Right.
I don't know if that's the case or not, but it's a possibility that...
Yeah. Well, that does remind me that, that when they were working up on my road, I noticed that they were, you know, lugging five-gallon things of diesel fuel for equipment and they were talking about needing a diesel fuel tank for a truck.
Yep, yep.
And it does seem that that...
It's been on my wisdom, I just think...
Yeah, well, we should think about that with the budget because that does seem like a time saver.
Well, why are they getting diesel fuel at Abbott's when we have a time clock here?
Sometimes when, like, when we're having a storm, the tanks run out.
Okay.
So it was set up at Abbott's and at White's that we could get fuel at different, I thought at White's we had a credit card down there, but I can't swear to that, so we could get it whenever, and Abbott's is when they're open.
Could I just run a tab for us or something?
Yeah, I think, believe we just run a tab at Abbott's.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, we'll sit down with Charlie and, and see. Anything else? Any else? I'd love a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.